All right. Did you hear that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I did. I would like to call to order the planning commission meeting of June 8. As people know, this is still a remote meeting and if you're having any trouble getting on, you can go to the agenda and there's a email address. You can also call in. There's a telephone number highlighted there as well. Guests or participants need to be raise their hands if they want to be heard. I would like to ask for the roll call.
Okay, thank you Chairman Wagstaff. I'll start with you and then go go from the top to bottom of my screen. So Chairman Wagstaff.
I am here.
Commissioner Tommers.
Yeah, present.
Vice Chair Cunser.
I'm here.
Commissioner Tauber. And Commissioner Swisher.
I'm here.
Good to see you.
Everybody's here. I would ask if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on matters not on the agenda, to please raise your hand. I don't see any. I don't see any hands being raised. So with that being said, I guess we'll go to the planning director's report.
Okay, thank you Chair Wagstaff and members of the commission. Just a couple of things to give you a heads up on. Next week, the city council will be hearing a will be presenting to them the Climate Action Plan 2030. It's a draft plan that we've been working on. We did have a public workshop about a month and a half ago and got some comments. We've done some updates to it. Kind of working on a couple of finishing touches to that, but we'll have it up on the website and going to the planning, going to the city council next week. Other things that are going on, the regional housing need assessment numbers, the methodology for the numbers has been approved earlier late last month by the ABAG Executive Board. And this begins a period, a little over 30 day period for appeal. And we'll be discussing the potential for appealing the city's 979 units over our next required for our next Rena housing element. And as I've mentioned in past, the the overall number is certainly a lot larger than we've had in the past. It's about fourfold that of, well, it's four and a half fold of our prior number. And well over double any of our highest numbers. But the more challenging aspect of that is about two thirds of it is affordable units, about 300. Very low and then a mix of low and moderate income units, which present additional challenges, of course, trying to meet those affordability levels at those types of numbers. All that said, the reason for appeals are cannot necessarily be based on those issues. The grounds for the appeal will be concerned about locating housing in Louis fire hazard zones, ADUs in the hillsides, or potentially more housing development in the hillsides, higher densities in those areas or and near near the creek and flood zones as well. So a variety of concerns there, but it looks like we may be going ahead to issue an appeal letter. One other item is the city has gone into contract with a company that manages permit software. They're how to permit product known as TrackIt. Some of you may be a bit familiar with that, but anyway, it's a it's a fairly common and robust program. And we are now beginning to implement. We have another company client first, it's been assisting the city with its adoption of a technology program and helping us move forward with technological advances and also going to be assisting the city and working with the software provider and implementing the program. And that is going to be about a year long process. So that's beginning. And other than that, we're looking forward to opening potentially opening doors sometime later this month, depending on the orders. We are still remain relatively short staff, so our department, if if opened at all, we'd probably have some limited hours. We are recruiting for an associate planner position and with the adoption of the budget. Last week, we will begin recruiting for another senior, excuse me, permit tech position, permit technician. So those are a few things going on. We'll let you move on. We've got a good item for discussion tonight. Any questions?
Seeing no questions. Thank you, Neil. We'll move on to the one item we have, which is a study session number 2116, which is 11135 Magnolia Avenue. And I guess I would ask for if there is a staff report to start this. Could you, could you go ahead and give that?
Yeah, let me first introduce for you Sean Kennings with LAK Associates. Sean is a longtime planner, has worked throughout Marin County and parts of the Bay Area as well. So he's very familiar with our area and this is one of our first times working with Sean. It's been helpful. I'm grateful for him to come step in and help with this project. So I'm gonna let him move forward with a presentation tonight. One thing I do want to let you know is before we go go any further, there was an additional item of late mail that I received. We received earlier today, which did not get into your late mail packet. So my apologies for that, but I could read it fairly briefly and it is on this topic. And I'll send it out to you guys separately, but it is, it's from Joan Lundstrom. She's a former mayor and lives in the in the Murray Avenue area near the project. And she says, this evening, June 8, 2021, you will be holding a study session, this is addressed to the commissioners. You will be holding a study session on the proposed redevelopment of a major parcel on North Magnolia Avenue. As a longtime resident and resident of Murray Park, the proposed residential units fronting on Magnolia and Estelle avenues are a nonstarter. Entrances to the first floor units would be a few feet away from the public sidewalk. Three, the three stories, 42 feet would create an immediate wall to the street. Think of ultra dense apartment units in Corte Madera on Temple Vista, which remind me of a rabbit Warren. Let's not duplicate this at the entrance to the city. That's Joe Lundstrom, former mayor, city of Larkspur. I don't see any other late mails that have arrived since we've started this. So I'll send this out to you and then you did receive some three late mails earlier today, which are on the agenda added to that. And with that, I'll hand it over to Sean Kennings for his presentation.
Thank you, Neil. Chair Wagstaff, members of the commission. I'm Sean Kennings, environmental land use planner with LAK Associates. I do have a presentation and I believe Kristen is going to put it up on the screen for me. We were having a little bit of technical issue, which is typical of these Zoom things. So hopefully, if you can be with us for a moment.
You can't see my screen?
Not yet.
I have it up. I don't know why it's not. Does the agenda?
Are you sharing screen?
Yes. Does the agenda show?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay.
Do you want me to try and share my screen here?
Is that working?
Yeah, it's now working.
That's the agenda.
Did it change to you?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. So Kristen's gonna help me with this presentation. This is a study session tonight of this project. There is no formal decision tonight. The purpose of the study session is to review the submitted design concept for a new mixed use commercial and residential development at the corner of Magnolium and Estelle in North Larkspur area. We want to review the project relative to the goals and the policies and sort of the general intent of what the general plan and the general plan update envisioned for this part of of North Magnolia Avenue, as it relates also to the housing element and the typical findings for design review. We ask that you, the planning commission, give feedback to the applicant and provide comments and feedback to the applicant and staff incorporating comments from the public. I'm going to try to run you through the staff report. I don't want to take up too much time. The applicant obviously has their own presentation. And I'll let them get into some of the design details. Next slide. So here's an aerial overlay of the of the site. It's sort of in a regular shape. But this is a good image to show that the majority of what may be considered parking and circulation for the property is actually within the Magnolia Avenue and Estelle Avenue right of way. It's about 71,000 square feet. There are three existing one story buildings, older construction, maybe 1960s, 1970s, totaling 23,656 square feet. There are several existing businesses, including Rustic Bakery, the Gravity Salon, the Larkspur Barber. There's a yoga studio or a physical therapy studio. But this once held the Corbett's Hardware Store, the the restaurant that is no longer there and many of the buildings remain vacant today. General plan designations, neighborhood commercial and the zoning is C2 commercial. Both of these designations contemplate residential can be allowed as long as it is over commercial. And the way staff interprets that is effectively a floor plate of commercial with residential above. The zoning allows residential with a conditional use permit. So there would be findings required for that. About 22,000 square feet of the site is a steep wooded hillside to the south rear of the property. And that is my understanding has had constraints in the past. Next slide. Here's a an image of the site looking in east. There's Magnolia Avenue on your left, Estelle on your right. You can see sort of the older sort of one story older construction, lots of parking and circulation. Many of these buildings here are empty, although there are some commercial businesses there in the corner. Next, please. This is looking southwest down Magnolia Avenue. You can see the Gravity Salon there on the left, Rustic Bakery is right in the middle. Adjacent to that is the Larkspur Barber, similar type building aesthetic, although a little bit different from some of the other buildings. Again, the parking and the circulation you see in front of you is actually in the Magnolia Avenue right of way. Next slide. So the project tonight is the redevelopment of this underutilized commercial parcel, which we all kind of consider the gateway for not only the North Magnolia Commercial Corridor, but but the north sort of west end of town. Project contemplates 24 residential townhomes in three stories, including five affordable units. This would all be developed on the flat part of the property, which is about an acre in size, using the current density allowed under the general plan of 21 units per acre. It's a little bit over an acre of this area, which which equals out to about 24 units. The applicant is proposing a a commercial use at the ground floor, street frontage of quote home office. Assuming that is consistent with the general plan. That is their presentation for today. The project also includes a sort of reimagining or a redevelopment of the Rustic Bakery building, which I understand includes the Gravity Salon and possibly the Larkspur Barber. They they're going to redesign that building to include kind of an outdoor dining, open space area adjacent to it. Again, if this project is consistent with the general plan, the applicant is proposing density bonus waivers and concessions, which is consistent with California density bonus law, which allows for concessions and or waivers, basically reductions of development standards. Typical for for the base zoning, provided you are consistent with the general plan and you're providing the required affordable units. So in this essence, the project is assuming concessions and or waivers for setbacks, height and parking. It would also require a lot line adjustment to sort of square off parts of the the site to to include all improvements on the site and not within the right of way. And and the project also includes landscaping, open space, and new parking and circulation. Just real quick, the difference between waivers and concessions. A concession is a development standard reduction based on a financial issue, i.e. if they had to build something into the project, it would it would preclude them from from completing the project because it'd be too expensive. Whereas a waiver is a physical constraint. You need to have a 20 foot setback. If you included the 20 foot setback, the the project couldn't couldn't be developed. So those are the two differences between those two. Next slide, please. Really quickly, you can see the project is sort of squared off, including all the improvements on site. 24 units are to the west in three different buildings with an internal circulation. They have not included sort of where the five affordable units will go. These are, these are effectively three story units, home office on the ground floor, parking behind, and then two floors of residential above. Commercial spaces on the east side. This would be the Rustic Bakery, Gravity in the barber shop with a with a open space plaza immediately adjacent. Again, the project would imagine 48 parking spaces for the residential units, two guest spaces internally. There are eight parking spaces for employees behind the Rustic Bakery building. And then again, sort of a reimagining of the existing circulation and parking. However, these parking spaces are, some of them are existing, some of them are in the right of way. This would be something we'd have to evaluate through the consistency through a formal application. Next slide. Really quickly, those are the massing diagrams and 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 sort of the the idea for what this could look like. The applicant included some images of Rose Lane, of the multifamily component of Rose Lane. As you can see, it's sort of a a storefront right at the sidewalk with a more of a commercial kind of window treatment with with second floor and third floor balcony stepping back to provide sort of a reduced mass and scale. Next slide. So when the applicant does come forward with a formal application, staff will have to go through the consistency analysis. That includes, is the project consistent with the general plan and the general plan policies for neighborhood commercial? Both the existing general plan and the general plan update that should be finalized later this year contemplates residential allowed over commercial. Again, the applicant is suggesting that home office in this design is a commercial use and therefore is consistent with the general plan. Next, there are, there are several housing element policies. There's a lot of discussion in the staff report. And Neil just explained the regional housing needs or Rena. And there are a lot of housing units that are required by Larkspur. So there are inclusionary housing policies. There are policies in the housing element that that look at this site as being something that that can realize a lot of housing. Again, we will, we will review the project for consistency with the housing element. The the base zoning development standards, there are setbacks standards, there are heights standards, there are parking standards. Right now, the the height is a maximum two stories, 24 feet setbacks are 15 to 20 feet or eight feet on the side and and parking has a specific requirement for commercial spaces and for residential units. As proposed right now, what you're looking at, all of those base zoning development standards are being proposed with a density bonus waiver or concession in mind. There is the also added hillside and natural open space component of the code where effectively keeping certain portions of the property undeveloped and or how the slope of a lot affects the overall development footprint. There are exclusions in that portion of the code which could apply to this. But again, staff will review the project to define consistency. Again, state density bonus law, depending on what the applicant comes forward with their formal application. And the reasons for the concessions and the waivers, staff will review for consistency. And finally, something we haven't done tonight, but will be required as part of the formal review is environmental review. That's things like traffic, air quality, noise impacts, hillside stability. So the applicant will be required to provide additional studies or technical analysis to confirm that there are no significant impacts and all projects, whether development, commercial in the state of California, required to go through sequel review. Next slide. Here, the the list of the different entitlements, they'll need a vesting tenant amount for the lot plan, conditional use permits for height and residential of commercial design review for all the improvements. Again, density bonus waivers and concessions, make sure they're consistent. Slope and hillside development exclusion to exclude the hillside. Lot line adjustment to square off the property and procurement permits for new driveway cuts and or improvements in the right of way. And then lastly, the circulation assessment permit, which is a required traffic analysis. Next slide. So the issues for consideration tonight, essentially what staff is looking for from the commission is not so much, you know, the project is too tall or it's too close to the street or there's not enough parking. But really, is this the kind of project that fits this site? And how could we make this project better? And so in that sense, it's more of a design review, circulation, flow of the project. Is there a good central design theme? Does it really work with the open space? And so the pros are, you know, for sale rental housing with a range of unit sizes, at least five affordable units. It's contributing to the city's Reno requirements. It's replacing a site that really is underutilized and has had some, you know, struggling history in the recent past. And it could provide sort of a node or a or a you know, a second downtown, if you will. Where, you know, bringing a lot of residents to an area and and it could have a an impact on other commercial uses. The unknowns at this time, the cons, we don't know about traffic or some of the sequel impacts. We really haven't sort of delved into whether home office in this capacity really meets the general plan. And there are some issues with the the right of way and the parking and circulation. Next slide. So again, does this project contribute to sort of the commercial vitality of the North Magnolia Commercial Corridor? Is this what the general plan contemplated when it talks about residential over commercial? Is this the conceptual design? High quality design that you want to see for this area? You know, this project is bringing the the frontage to the street. It's got a similar look and feel to other other projects in town. You know, do you want to see shingle style? Do you want to see corrugated metal? Do you want to see brick? Stucco, you know, what are the things that would really make this sort of a marquee development at this location? Next issue is commercial really in this sense, is home office truly commercial? Another way to put it is commercial really something that's viable in this location. Obviously, the Rustic Bakery is a is a sort of a a marquee use in this area. The barber shop is well loved, the salon is well loved. There are other uses that could be integrated into the development, although the rest of the site is sort of sort of a vacant eyesore. So the idea is, what kind of comments can you provide to the applicant that would help them create a cohesiveness to both the entire project internally or as it relates to surrounding uses? Similarly, are there other sort of quote unquote, commercial uses that you could envision at this property that you would really like to see and suggest to the applicant how to integrate into the site? Next slide. One of the issues is, you know, is the development located at the street frontage with an internal circulation street with parking in the rear? Is that the right type of project for this for this site? Could you contemplate a different type of development? Maybe one that's not as close to the street frontage, maybe it's pushed back against the hillside. Maybe there's different ways to park the property. One of the issues that this arises from is the fire department has made some comments about required drive walk, drive aisle widths internally and and a fire truck turnaround on that internal circulation. Those are things that when we talk about concessions and waivers, I don't know if we can get to that point because that's a health safety issue, emergency access. And so is there, is there a a comment that you could provide that that maybe helps the applicant sort of reimagine, if possible, what the site could be? And then this this other point is, is the Rustic Bakery, is that in the right spot? I mean, could it be moved to the corner of Estelle? Should it be in the middle of the site? Should it be? You know, have a more marquee or more visible storefrontage? As it is right now, it looks like it's just sort of a a renovation of the existing building. You know, maybe the applicant could appreciate some comments about about what maybe that Rustic Bakery building or or, you know, sort of a designation open space could be, you know, a real sort of sort of north town square kind of concept. Next slide. And then lastly, these two, these two issues is one that sort of I think staff have struggled with in that if the general plan really has a strict adherence to residential over commercial and this home office concept just doesn't quite meet there. Are there alternatives to this proposal that are better suited for not only this project, but for other projects in town? Obviously, you're going through a general plan update. It's already been sort of presented as residential over commercial or neighborhood commercial, but but maybe there are options, whether it's a general plan modification, or you could support a rezoning to possibly a planned development or some other type of use for the site that allows for instead of vertical integration of commercial on the ground floor, you would have what they're proposing essentially horizontal, commercial and residential. But provides sort of more flexibility in either the code or the entitlement process. So this applicant or other applicants have have a more opportunity to design something so that it flows with the street or flows with the community as opposed to as opposed to what's proposed. And again, these are, these are just suggested ideas for the commission to contemplate and to provide comments. Next slide. We have received some public comments on this on this project. I believe there are about five comment letters. There have been some that have come in today. Neil read one for you. I've received five phone calls or so. Five phone calls or so. There's a general support, I think, I, I've heard and seen. Support for housing, support for rustic bakery, support for redevelopment of the site. But there are concerns about the mass, the bulk, the height, the hillside stability, traffic and parking. Obviously, a lot of those concerns will be evaluated during the sequel process and the formal application. And so tonight, I am this, my presentation, next slide. Again. The planning commission, you've been able to review the conceptual plans. You, I'm available for questions, I believe Neil's available for questions. You'll take public comments from members of the comment, members of the public, and then to provide commentary. You know, overall, the site plan and the massing and the exhibits. And then, you know, provide direction to the applicant on how to either revise, refine or improve their project. And obviously, the formal application is, is unknown at this time, but. We thank you for your time tonight and I am available for questions if you have any. Does anybody have any questions?
I have, I just have one question. Most of my questions are reserved for the applicant, but I do have one. On page five of the, of the staff report. It says the city has performed drainage improvements on the Hillcrest Avenue dirt road to reduce the risk of any further slide. So I see reduce the risk, it doesn't say to me that it eliminates the risk, so I'm just wondering. What is the intensity of the, of the remaining risk? To that hillside?
I'm gonna leave that question to Neil. As I'm new to the community in this sense, but. In a general sense, if there is a slide on the property and, and it requires remediation, I think that would be part of. Any, any formal application, but I don't know the extent of the hillside remediation.
Yeah, I think I answered that question the best we can, any, any, any sort of conclusive answer would be speculative. I know if it's my understanding, and this was many years ago. There were, there was a slide and then there were some repairs to divert drainage to. Avoid, there were some repair to the slide and some diversion of drainage to avoid. Accelerating or adding to the slide area. But I, I can't really speculate on, you know, how. Well, that will perform into the future, as Sean said. As we get an application. There would be a lot more detailed evaluation of potential geologic impacts. Geology and drainage at that point.
I would think that they're gonna have to do a lot of civil engineering work on that place because that hillside is very unstable. I know a lot of the business owners on that stretch and that's always been a real concern for that area. Is how unstable that hillside is. I would think that they're gonna have to put a massive retaining wall behind that. Are there, is, is part of this planning on grading part of that hillside? I mean, like taking out a portion of it?
Kristen, can you go up to? The site plan?
And I think that, yeah, I think the applicants will talk about it, but they're, they're, the, the plan does very. Very limited intrusion into the hill, not to say that it won't need. As you say, some catchment and protection. Particularly for making improvements at the, at the base of the hill, but there's sort of building largely within the developed area. Yeah. But I do know the corner of that. Building is, is kind of at the. Point of where I think that the slide area, you see how the hill kind of at the. North, at the west, north, southwest corner kind of. There's a little bit of a ravine or, or curve in the hill there where. Probably some of the slop area.
When you look at the topo lines, that's like basically a cliff. And I mean, I know they had the problem with corbids is that at one point they had their entire back wall intruded by dirt when there was that big rain.
That's correct. That was the slide condition and. Hillcrest Avenue, which is actually not an improved street at that point, but it is the. Public, it is public land, public right of way. And there's, as you see, there is a little bit of asphalt, I guess, and. But it's not really a street. But they had to. Do some drainage and diversion to avoid more runoff in that area.
Does anybody else have any questions?
You know, I had a really quick and simple question, but it's more for clarification on the affordable housing requirement. It's, it says different things in different places. I just wanted to make sure. It said, because I think there's a 20% threshold. And. In the presentation by Sean, I think you said there would be at least five units. But in the report, it says up to five. So what is the actual expectation here?
So 20% of 24 units, I think is 4.8. And I think it's typical to round up. Now. The applicant could decide to only do four units and pay the remainder of the point eight as an inclusionary fee. However. This state density bonus law, the more affordable units you provide. The more concessions and waivers you're, you're allowed or afforded. So it's in their. It's in their benefit to provide more affordable housing. If they want to have more concessions and waivers. But again, that's, that's something that they have to contemplate as part of their formal application.
Okay, so it's not a strict requirement, it's really what, it's kind of like a give and take.
Well, there is, there is a requirement for 20%. Whether or not they sort of go to the full five. Or pay for that remainder percentage. Or whether they want to provide, provide, you know, more than five. They can, they can sort of. Mix and match, I guess, if you will, with, with the allowable. State laws, the, it's called the Housing and Affordable, Housing Affordability Act. State law, there's a lot of government speak in there that, that. Documents what you get for what percentage of units you provide. For instance, if you provide 10% low income, you get one concession. If you provide 20% low income, you get three concessions. So again, it's, it's, it's incumbent on them to make an application. That shows consistency, not only with the local code, with the state law. And then how those, how their project app, application then. Translates to, to what kind of concessions and waivers they want on top of that.
Okay, so. To get the concessions, they have to provide. The affordable housing, but if they don't provide the affordable housing, there's no concessions. So they could still build a project, but there would be no affordable housing. But, and no concessions.
That's right, and they're, they're, they, you know, and I, I'd let Neil speak to how. Some projects in the past, I believe, instead of building the affordable units, you could just contribute to the inclusionary housing fund. But in order for them to. Sort of get this, this horizontal integration of residential and commercial. And a three-story structure. They have one of two options, either comply with the HAA. And the state density bonus law, which means that you have to be consistent with the general plan and consistent with the zoning. Then you get these concessions and waivers, right? So the, of those, those policies and those state laws is to. Facilitate affordable housing, so there's no obstruction to the, to the actual construction of it. The other option is if they don't want to do any of those sort of mix and match things, is come in for a, a rezone. Completely reimagine the zoning for this area, which. I would think would be a planned development. But that requires a lot of discretionary approval from the planning commission and the community. And, and in that sense, they could get their height, they could get their units, but maybe they don't build as many affordable.
And I, and I think to get back to your initial question, Commissioner Chalmers. Are the city, while there is a density bonus and. Concessions and waivers are offered for that, yes, the city has an inclusionary housing requirement. For a minimum 20%, and yes, if, if it is a fraction. If that, if what, if part of that 20% ends up being a fraction of a unit like four fifths. Then the applicant has the option of either, you know, constructing that unit. And claiming the benefits of that waiver bonus. Or going towards an equivalency, some form of equivalency action. Or else doing an in-luck fee. Based on the value of the affordability of providing that unit. Or four fifths of that unit. And that goes to a housing trust fund and can be put towards other projects. Generally, the city prefers not, prefers to see the units built as opposed to in-luck fees where possible.
Neil, is there any density benefit to senior housing?
There's, there's no specific density benefit to senior housing.
Okay, unless those senior units are. Low to low income, specifically affordable units.
Right.
But if their market rate senior, then it doesn't qualify. Are there any other questions for Sean?
Yeah, I, I would just kind of like, just to kind of give a little framework on the senior housing. In the past, the senior housing has been. Sometimes considered kind of a, a community benefit. I know with the Rose Lane development. In that project, the senior housing that was instituted there was identified as a, a community. Benefit and encouraged. Because of the need, the demographic need for senior housing and that it does tend to have less impact. Relative to traffic or conceptually.
Could, could I ask for a clarification to the response that was given to Commissioner Chalmers? Should. Rather than produce waivers, for example, for the, the, the home office concept that the applicant is proposing. That, that the commission and the city council preferred. To go for an, an area specific plan essentially for this, for this block or for this area. Would that, would that actually change? The requirements for that 20% requirement for affordable housing? Or could that not be, could that, that, that could still be included in area specific plan? Am I correct?
It, it could be and would typically be for a project, even if it's a. Plan development, if the development is envisioning residential housing, typically. There would be some requirement or inclusion for affordable housing within that.
Okay.
Any other questions for Neil or Sean?
I, I probably have several for the applicant, but I'll ask this one now. Is there a reason why the proposal doesn't put housing above the commercial space? And that could reduce some of the density of the other units?
I guess I'll try to answer this for Sean. We have in our discussions with the applicant been pretty clear that. The zoning is primarily commercial. And that the, both the general plan and the zoning. Encourage second story residential above, above commercial. And we've identified potential avenues or other avenues for taking that approach. But the applicants have kept with. Initially, what was a proposal, going to be a proposal to potentially re. Designate and rezone the parcel more towards either. Multi-family residential or the, or a. Or a planned development type approach. The applicants have sought to get feedback. On this approach as being more of a. What might be termed a horizontal mixed use, keeping some element of the commercial. And keeping some. Presentation of. Commercial storefront on these units, although we haven't. We haven't identified this, the home offices or initially what reflects spaces as being commercial uses. So the, the applicants are really here with the opportunity to just get feedback on. Whether this looks and feels like something that. Either we should be working on as a solution under the. You know, whether that's an amendment to the general plan or the zoning. Or not.
My first response to this is that that area needs development, otherwise it's gonna just languish. I mean, those buildings aren't gonna go anywhere and, you know, it's one of these things, if it's not when. You know, when's it gonna get done? If it's not, you know, something like this, I don't think it's gonna get done.
But, but I feel like, you know, some of the concern is the density, that one way you can do that is if you. If, if you follow the general plan and you put some of the housing over the, the commercial space.
Yeah.
You could still have the same kind of feel of the storefronts. And, and just put some housing on top and maybe that's, you can make that your affordable housing. You know, it just feels to me like you're trying to cram on awful 24 units and a little over an acre is a whole lot of units. And I, I, I mean, I want to ask the applicant about the home office. It seems like there's an awful lot of them. I understand why retail may not be very good here, but maybe you can have some home offices and some commercial space.
They could be like, you know, I mean, well, obviously the coronavirus has changed people's work habits and I think that's gonna happen well into the future where that. Home office might be sort of like a workspace type thing.
Or maybe the space is then zoned, it's a new kind of zoning where there's some, some flexibility that maybe it could be converted to office space or. You know, more typical sort of retail commercials. Anyway.
We should probably let the applicant or their architect make, make their presentation and then we can actually ask them these questions because. They're, they're important questions for sure.
I'll note for the commission too is, and you can, I, you can probably see this, we do have a good number of attendees as well. I know the applicant has a team, will probably have a number of people who want to talk about the proposal.
Planning Director talked, we do have one individual with their hand raised. Do you want to tell them how we're gonna proceed?
Let's go first to the applicants. And then we can take the public conversation, so. I guess I would like the applicants to raise their, raise their hands. I know, I believe Seel Ash is here.
Anyone else want to raise their hand?
I see four hands raised. Can you see who, who they are? I think.
Yeah, I think those are, those are the applicants.
So Kristen, let's have them go ahead and make their presentation.
Okay, I need to have John Thatch unmute himself. He's still muted.
Am I?
I have Seel Ash unmuted, ready to speak, Amir, Richard and John Thatch.
Why don't you go ahead and, and start?
And. Kristen, do you want to go ahead and do their presentation? We were having trouble doing the share screen. Before.
Amir Farheed needs to unmute himself if he wants to speak.
That's okay, he's.
Okay. They could, they're all able to speak now.
Can, can everyone hear me? Can, can everyone hear me? Yes. Okay, great. Kristen, would you mind sharing our presentation, please, or enlarging it?
That's as big as it gets. It's.
Okay, so I, I'm probably, I see myself kind of fullscreen, but that's okay. I see the, the slide minimized, but let's see if I can change this. I guess this, this works. Can everyone else see the presentation clearly in large format?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, we can see it.
That's good. Yep. Well, good evening, Audible Commissioners, City Staff, and Larkspur Residents. Thank you for taking the time this evening to join us to discuss our concept for the Magnolia mixed-use community. My name is Seel Ash Moazami. I'm the applicant. Here with me this evening are Chad Eisenbud and Amir Farheed, co-applicants, and we've got Richard Burling of Pacific Design Group and John Thatch of the Dalton Group present as well. We're all first and foremost local. I grew up in Marin, lived in Corte Madera, went to Redwood High School, College of Marin, and, and later SF State. Amir went to Base H Kent, Redwood, College of Marin, Sonoma State. Chad lives with his family in Mill Valley. Sure, everyone's familiar with Richard. His offices are downtown Larkspur. John Thatch with the Dalton Group, the architect record for Rose Lane, former Niven Nursery site, actually started Dalton Group in Marin County. So we're, we're local. Next slide, please. Our primary objective from day one has been to rejuvenate a long time underutilized property by preserving and upgrading the existing tenants while providing 24 townhomes that all feature dedicated ground floor office space. Home offices were in high demand prior to the pandemic. Remote work is here to stay. Our plan thoughtfully merges the residential and commercial uses with a well-designed streetscape and an open space between the uses to activate Larkspur's gateway while providing a built-in customer base to tenants. We plan on five of our 24 townhomes being affordable, allowing for dedicated community-serving professionals such as teachers, police officers, and firefighters to live closer to areas they serve and protect. Next slide, please. I'm having a hard time seeing the screen, so I'm just going to look at my printout here. So Sean, thank you very much for a great job presenting the project. Neil pointed out, as well as Sean, a few different approaches to the entitlement. We are seeking a density bonus project and so quick kind of overview of density bonus law. Density bonus law encourages the development of affordable housing by relaxing otherwise applicable local regulations for projects providing affordable housing. The law basically provides four mechanisms for altering local regulations. The density bonus, which is an increase in the number of units permitted, incentives and/or concessions, which are modifications of zoning code requirements and other regulatory incentives or concessions that result in identifiable and actual cost reductions to provide for affordable housing costs. Waivers, which are waiver or reduction in development standards that will have the effect of physically precluding the construction of a development at the density and with the incentives or concessions permitted by the law. And finally, the law sets maximum parking ratios that supersede higher local agency requirements. Next slide, please. Since five of our 24 units would be affordable under density bonus law, we believe this project is entitled to a 15% density bonus to incentives and/or concessions as many waivers of development standards as needed to physically fit the project and residential parking ratios afforded by density bonus law. Next slide, please. Thank you. So we only seek one incentive, and that's to provide for horizontal mixed use rather than vertical mixed use. Waivers for the front inside yard setbacks, an increase in height from two to three stories, and the reduction of the commercial parking ratio from 1 for 180 square feet to 1 for 216 square feet. We ask for residential parking ratios afforded by density bonus law. And I will now pass it off to Richard, who's going to give an overview of the commercial component of the project and who's the lead designer for, on our team.
Thank you, Seia. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
You're good.
Great, great. Okay. Let's leave the survey up. Thank you. Good evening, Planning Commission Chair, Wagstaff, and the Commission members, Seel, Larkspur staff, and interested neighbors. Hi, Kristen. Hi, Neil. My name is Richard Burling, and I represent the architectural firm Pacific Design Group, locally based here in Larkspur. The proposed project before you tonight has two components, one commercial and one residential. Pacific Design Group has been selected as the lead firm for the overall project and the architectural firm for the commercial component. The well-acclaimed firm, the Dalton Group, who recently won praise with the successful Rose Lane project, will present the residential component of this project. Briefly, Pacific Design Group has been involved with the North Magnolia Commercial Corridor for more than a decade. We facilitated the Corbett Hardware Stores move to the vacant Bank of America building at the corner of Bon Air and Magnolia Avenue. We remodeled the Larks for Storage Building Complex, converted the existing structures into the West America Bank, and every modeled both the Gravity Salon and the Rustic Bakery at the subject site. Additionally, for this site, we developed the Shops at Magnolia Project, which achieved unanimous approval at the designer view level. The proposed project, you can see it here in the survey, represents a comprehensive solution to a challenging site. The existing buildings are substandard, were poorly constructed, have deferred maintenance issues, and will not only be difficult but costly to rehabilitate and bring to current building standards. Two of these buildings have been vacant for years without any prospective tenants. The city of Larkspur's Magnolia Avenue right-of-way and the subject site's property lines overlap each other in a manner that requires the public handicap sidewalk onto the subject site's building sidewalks and the subject site's parking into the city of Larkspur's right-of-way. This access is convoluted and unsafe, and the parking has always been grossly code-deficient and problematic for the surrounding neighborhood. Could we go to the overall site plan, please? Thank you. Our concept for the commercial component of the project retains the recently remodeled Gravity Salon in its present location. This sets the architectural style for the rest of the commercial building. The existing Mansa roof will be removed and the building's exterior updated. The barber shop will be relocated between the salon and rustic bakery. Additional parking spaces are proposed with a safe and more direct access to the bakery, the salon, and the barber shop. Could we go to the next slide, the enlarged commercial piece? Thank you. The Rustic Bakery Store is proposed to expand into the remaining space with the addition of a mercantile shop and a visible kitchen. The removal of a portion of the existing west-facing structure will allow direct access from Rustic Bakery to an outdoor garden dining patio experience similar to the Rustic Bakery at the Marin Country Mart. This is the original Rustic Bakery location, and our goal is to honor this by creating a flagship store in its present location that Larkspur and the surrounding community can enjoy. The public sidewalk is proposed to be realigned into the Magnolia right-of-way, and a section of the parallel parking is proposed to be relocated into the Magnolia Avenue right-of-way. This not only provides for a safer pedestrian automobile experience for those shopping at the commercial stores, it also allows for a safe ADA-compliant sidewalk within the Magnolia Avenue right-of-way, eliminating the unsafe, non-code compliant conditions that presently exist. Additionally, the commercial amount of existing space and replacing it with with a residential use reduces the overall site parking requirements, solving many onsite and neighborhood parking issues. Could we have the next slide, please? This proposed project with new code compliant sidewalks, a newly easily accessible garden patio with bike racks will provide pedestrians, bicyclists, and the new residents with a welcome community gathering place, as well as defining the transition zone between the commercial and residential structures. Pacific Design Group is excited to be involved with this well-developed, thoughtful, mixed-use project that will re-energize this vacant, underutilized property. At this point, I would now turn, like to turn over the presentation to John Thatch with the Dalton Group, who will present the residential component of the project. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. I'm John Thatch, Design Director of Dalton Architecture. As stated, we started our career in San Rafael a long time ago and very happy to continue working in Larkspur. The things I want to point out about this community that I think we are designing is looking at some of the things that Richard mentioned, traffic. We have less entrances. With the townhomes, we're designing around the perimeter of the site. We are hiding the parking. The parking all happens in the rear and two-car garage configurations. And the big thing again was discussion from both Neil and from Sean was the home office, where I've been doing for the last year. You know, we have a substantial office, but I've been working at home for the past year very effectively and plan on doing that most of the time and then rest of my career. So I think having the home office at the edge conditions and designing it, you know, as a storefront and urban-friendly design, I think works out really well as is presented in the site plan. Next slide, please. And some of the things that I mentioned, again, we're very early stages, but we know in looking at massing like we're done in Rose Lane is looking at, yes, they are three-story buildings, but looking at how we can articulate them with one-story, you know, balconies at that level, two stories, and having one, two, and three-story elements in our design. And one thing we want to point out is the hill behind us. We've heard the concerns about the slides and things like that, that we're going to have to take care of. But we're looking at intruding into that area very limited and really maintaining that heavily forested area there. And also of note, which is sort of shown in Sean's aerial, is we have about 40 to 60 feet vertical separation from our neighbors, plus we're 75 to over 100 feet from them. It's our closest area. Next slide, please. And we're taking a lot of take of what we did at Rose Lane and talked about the, the balconies. We talked about two and three-story elements, how we can mix that up and looking at, you know, masonry and looking at different materials, whether it's shingles, you know, painted wood, but really playing off, I think, some of the older character of Larkspur, which I think is very, you know, exciting and has a lot of energy to it. The other item I want to point out that Richard also talked about for Rustic Bakery is looking at the landscape. You know, we have different areas I think we'll look at as we develop this, you know, the corners, we've articulated the corners of our, our buildings and how we can create little plazas and what we're going to do in that plaza in the back. I think we're going to have a lot of possibilities like what we have done at Rose Lane. Next slide, please. And this is just again, very early stages of, of looking at how this corner could develop, how it can go further than we've done here as far as creating a landmark sort of corner as you come in to Larkspur and Magnolia and Estelle. And then this shows it looking down toward Rustic Bakery to the far left. Next slide. And this shows, looking back towards Estelle, that also shows again articulation of the building and looking at how we're creating storefront appearance to the home offices, I think really augmenting what we're going to be doing with Richard at Rustic Bakery. They're really having something playful as far as materials and articulation of architecture. Next slide, please. And really wanted to show this slide, just looking at the quality, looking at the materials and as far as how we're creating a friendly, soft, urban streetscape at this edge. And even though we have a three-story building, it has a softness to it as far as how it steps back from the pedestrian realm. And with that, I'll return Seia to close. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And I heard a lot of good questions from many of the commissioners and just wanted to let everyone know that we're all here to answer any questions as they come up and hand it back over to Neil. Does anybody have any questions, Perseia?
Yeah, I do, actually. You know, can they talk to how they envision this work? Home office is going to work with these front windows, front edges? I mean, is it, is the expectation that it's going to be like a doctor's office or something out there where people like general public's going to come in and out, or is it like private office? And if it's, and how, how do you maintain that? How does that maintain for the rest of the project? Like what, what do you actually think is going to happen in these home offices with these big windows?
Great question. I think we somewhat touched on it, but our intent from day one was, you know, creating dedicated home office space for people who not, I'm not sure I'd categorize doctors working from home, but maybe attorneys, architects, you know, real estate people, tech executives. Southern Marin specifically has a lot of, has an influx of, you know, tech, mid-level managers and C-level folks. And I think anyone who has a home office and, you know, had the struggle kind of working from home and not having dedicated home office space would appreciate the ground floor office condition. I think the, the storefront window system is there to you know, give it more of that commercial look and feel and, you know, I guess blend better with the rustic and gravity and Larkspur Barber Building.
I could see, I could see these could be psychologist offices or psychiatrist offices as well. So physicians could theoretically use these kind of spaces as a home office as well, so that but I think you're right. I think real estate lawyers, et cetera, would be a great use for this.
Right. And I, I, I agree. I mean, we've had plenty of, I've got three little kids and, you know, I wish I had a dedicated home office space, but over the past year, I found, you know, us zooming there, our pediatrician is also remote. So you're right, I think doctors are working remote these days and probably will continue to do so. Just, just following up on the, the home office, would there be, there would have to be access from the, from the residence above presumably? So is that then the entrance to the house or do you enter from the other side? Yeah, so the home office is, I guess, your front door, but the residence is, you know, you pull into your garage that's that, you know, rear-loaded, so you could get to your residence through your garage, but you know, if you're walking out, you're probably walking back in through your office.
Do you have any examples of, of this home office concept being deemed as commercial use elsewhere, like some in another city somewhere else?
John, I mean, I can, John, do you have any?
I have something. I, there's a couple of examples that I know of in Southern California that I'm very aware of that have, have done well. Development called Ladera Ranch, where they've, they've done, done well. I can get you more information on that. The other thing I also wanted to point out is that we have a variety of, of spaces in, in, in the home, the flex space, the home office areas. The corners have some sizable units, which for my wife and I, we found out our 200 square feet of loft is not big enough for us as far as all the Zoom calls. So there's some where actually you could divide it and you could do different things. So there's a variety of different sizes in, in our, in our concept plan.
I was going to ask how big they are.
They, they range from 150 square feet to, I think we have some there 450 plus square feet on the corners.
It would be useful to see how it's worked in other places, because if, if one of the questions that the applicant is asking us is to consider is these home offices. these home offices are going to be deemed commercial to look at, then we need to really look at this very carefully and would love to see like how that has been approved or accepted elsewhere in the state, I mean, saying in LA. So I think that would be very helpful to see this other project.
There are many live-work situations in, in San Diego. I'm sure we can pull up some examples.
Yeah, I guess to be, to be, sorry if I was, didn't do a good job with my part of the presentation, but we are seeking incentive to provide horizontal mixed use rather than vertical mixed use. So we're not, we're not saying that the home office is, you know, a heavy commercial use. But it's, it's, it's really there because it wants to be there. It's what the market wants and, you know, buyers are looking for dedicated home office space. So our, our plan was to invoke state density bonus and use an incentive to provide horizontal mixed use. And there are precedents for that and case law.
Can I, can I ask you to dive maybe a little bit deeper to that? Because if the incentive which is being requested is this sort of a horizontal disposition of, of commercial and, and residential. Why could those, why could those, those home office, why do those home office fronts have to necessarily present as areas where people from the outside would, would necessarily come in? You could have a home office space configured exactly the same as what you're, as what you're suggesting without or this pretense of them appearing to be storefronts. So I find myself, so, so if the incentive that, that you're proposing is, well, you know, we're going to have commercial development, but it's going to be, you know, it's going to be it's going to be designed in a horizontal fashion rather than a vertical one, then you might not need to sort of have this, you know, somewhat fictitious. You know, concept of a home office presenting like a storefront. That I find, that's, that's what I find myself wondering. So if you could respond to that, the, the other, the other thing I was wondering. And Sean actually used the word, you know, marquee as, as a descriptor of what the site would, would look at and look like. And I think that's, I think that's great. You know, he also mentioned that this would be a gateway to the city of Larkspur, which is coming from the north. And that was also a very good observation. I do see that you're using the brick veneer as a fairly significant design element. And given that brick is not really a construction format, which is used in this area for, you know, for seismic reasons. It seems to be a little bit counter indicated that you would use brick as sort of a major design feature rather than another material, which would be more representative of essentially the natural surroundings and the natural surroundings do not include structures that are made out of brick because they tend to fall down.
Hey Daniel, my house is brick. It looks awfully nice. And I, your first comment, I think these look really cool. I mean, just the, the, the design aesthetic of this, whether it's, it's trying to be something else, it still looks pretty damn cool, I think. So just my, my use sense.
Yeah. Then when we get to that, that deliberation, that, that might be the view, the view that prevails. But I just, I, I just, these are just questions that I'm asking myself and of the applicants that if you looked at other possibilities, you know, for the site, especially since the since what you're requesting in terms of incentive is already incorporated by, by designing Rustic Bakery to be, you know, on the site, but you know, in a horizontal, you know, as a horizontal element rather than, 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 than the vertical.
Well, and, and the office spaces really intended to be accessible by the public and that's why they look that way and have doors that go out to the, you know, basically in the street.
You know, I mean, right now you are looking at my home office, but there's, there's a, what I do hear does not require people coming in from the outside.
Yeah. Great, great questions. And I think, you know, I'd like to say that we're open to design. We just, this was a starting point, you know, we, you know, we're all from Marin, so we try to pull from the cedar and some of the softer kind of elements of the skin, but I will say that, you know, the we originally didn't have these storefront windows systems and we heard from staff and, you know, this being the Larkspur's gateway. You know, we thought making the, the ground plane feel a little bit more commercial would achieve that. But, you know, I think to, I think it's subjective. I think, you know, we, the intent was always home office. So whether it's, it's more of a residential window or a commercial window. I, I happen to like the commercial window. Someone else made it up, but we're open to, we're open to your suggestions and feedback. That's why we're here this evening.
I, I guess I'm wondering on the, like I said, is it really the intent to have these be more like, you know, real office space that people, you know, if you're talking, that come from the outside to see someone. So if it's like a real estate agent and somebody would come to their office or something like that. Or is it really just like people have with a bedroom, another bedroom that they make into a home office and then it just happens to be on the ground floor?
Yeah. So I think it's, it's probably not like a real estate office, but it's, as one of the other commissioners pointed out, it's a private home office. So, you know, I work out of the house four and a half days a week. John's five days a week. Amir's five days a week. I spent four years in tech at a company ironically called Marin Software where the founders were from Marin and I was working remote three days a week pre-pandemic, 2011 to 2015. So it's professionals who want quite located home office space. Like it would be very cool to be able to walk out your front door down the street to Rustic Bakery and walk back. And, you know, if you happen to have a coworker or, or, you know, someone that wants to pop by your home office, I think you're afforded that luxury having frontage along Magnolia. But, but it, you know, the intent was not to have a, you know, a Coldwell Banker sign or something outside. It's private home office.
Yeah, and maybe I'm partially at fault, maybe as the architect. I love glass. I love windows. I also just love Marin and how green it is, even if you're on a street. And I just, you know, I bring me natural light in as much as possible and also looking at maybe the brick like the kiln in Larkspur, you know, maybe having a softer feel, but very open to something that maybe is more organic, but like that's also part of to me Larkspur spirit.
Well, I think there could be a variety of connections to the sidewalk. Some might have an access door, some might not, some might have larger windows. It just, just depends.
Yeah.
I think though that you have to sort of figure out how you enter the residence. And right now you either rent, as far as I can tell, you enter from the back via the garage or you enter through the office. And that's, that's something I think that sort of needs to be at least considered and.
I don't know that you're, you'd want all your visitors to your home, either going through your garage or through your home office.
No.
It would be nice to have a real front door.
Yeah, I, I think those are things definitely we will be working on in our next steps. I, I agree with you on that.
You, you're, you're envisioning the, the residences to be between fourteen hundred and fifty and two thousand square feet. Does that include the, the, the two-car garages, which I, I'm imagining would be about four hundred square feet? Or is that exclusive to the garage?
It's exclusive without the garage.
It's without, it's without the garage. So these are, these are really designed to be family residences, measured three to four bedrooms. Is that correct?
Yeah, I, I, yes, I think we're looking at, you know, very comfortable residences, you know, for, you know, for luxury residents for families and still want to you know, being able to live in this environment.
Yeah. Have you, have you looked at, because I was, the reason I'm asking the question has to do with the, with the amount of outdoor space there is because if you're looking at three and four bedrooms, you're looking at families with children. And, and please do correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I, I had a hard time finding spaces for kids to actually run around on the site. And then obviously with the hill in the back, in the back, there's no, there's no open space available there. So, you know, kids would essentially have to, you know, cross the street or go somewhere else. Is, is that, is that an unfair, is that an unfair observation?
I think, you know, I lived in a three-story townhome up till not too long ago through September with three little kids and we didn't have a yard. And so, but I wasn't fortunate enough to live in, you know, Southern Marin at the time where there's plenty of open space and parks. And I mean, you've got more open space than really any other county in the, in the, in the states. So I think young families would love to live here and there's very accessible, you know, trails and parks and et cetera, et cetera. So I think that's a sacrifice you make. But we do, I, I guess back to your question, the residential component does have a small open space and the townhomes do have balconies. So there is a little bit of open space.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Can I ask the question that I asked earlier about why you did not want to put housing above the commercial space?
Well, the, the existing Rustic Bakery building and the existing buildings are older. And so probably adding residential on top of existing commercial would be economically challenging. Like if, if I'm answering your question, is, was your question, why aren't we adding housing on top of Rustic Gravity and for Larkspur ever?
So can you? I, I guess my concern is that this feels very, very dense and very sort of crowded. I would really like to see personally housing above the commercial space. So that this all is kind of a similar height maybe. And a little less dense massing of this of, of the, of the breast of it. So you could still have your twenty-four units, but spread them out over more space.
Yeah. Part of what happens is, is the parking requirements of, of making this as far as what we have to do and sort of making that balance of, you know, how the, how the site plan works and how we, you know, provide parking for the residential and the commercial. So it's sort of been a balance that we've sort of, how we've sort of had to play with.
Yeah, I, I agree with John. The, the parking for the commercial component is, is pretty clean and compact and directed. I don't know if you put maybe, given the circulation to get up from the ground floor to units above the existing commercial. That's going to take up a lot of room and you would have to impact the main level. So, you know, you, you might have to destroy Rustic Bakery to save it because those buildings are in such poor condition. I don't know. It's going to be an easy throw to get the circulation from the ground floor up either.
But if the building.
Wouldn't you have to provide parking for residences?
But if the buildings are in such bad shape, maybe that's really what's needed.
Yeah, maybe. I, I don't know, but I just think that you would have to do garages and parking for residences and it would be, would take up the whole ground floor. So it's problematic, but, but I hear what you say.
I guess I'm feeling like you really, that, that this concept should maybe be rethought in that way. And, and I'm also wondering whether the home offices should be more of a mix of, of commercial, real commercial and not all home offices in every single unit.
I'm, I'm also thinking that maybe the commercial, if you had, it feels like something needs to anchor the, the north part of the complex and it might be commercial. I like the indent for the little bit of landscaping there, but that's really the entry to Larkspur in a way. So I think that end of the building is, is quite important and.
And you don't even see the commercial because you've got this big, you know, three-story mass in front of it.
And, and I guess my other, other thought is that these are actually pretty big units. They're three and four bedroom. We live in an eighteen hundred square foot house that has four bedrooms. So it can be done and, and the height, I think, can vary more, more than forty-two feet. If you, even if you have nine-foot ceilings, it's still hard to get up to forty-two feet. Maybe some of them are flat roofs or a little more modern style or, or something, but I think it's a, I, I would love to see something done there. So I, I hope you keep pushing at it.
So that it feels more like a village.
Yeah.
You know, I'd like to add a comment on that, which is, you know, I, I do want to say, I think it's great that the developers are coming in here and looking at the site. And I think there's a need for residential housing. So it's great that they are proposing something here. I think it would be useful to hear the general public's view on this. I know we haven't really had any comments from the public yet. And we've sort of, as a commission, we're coming in with our thoughts right, so right now. And I know there's probably people who wanted to speak. And I think another thought I had was that this was only, this is really only a sort of study design. So I don't think we have noticed much of Larkspur. The notice only really went out to just the immediate, right, the immediate neighborhood. It was kind of a notice on the building. So I don't know how many people from the general public even have access to tonight's meeting. So I just want to make that point. But since we're on that.
This is a very good point, and I really think that it probably is time to open it up to whoever would like, like to talk.
Yeah. Before you do that, can I just, I do have a couple of questions I actually want to ask, just general questions. But I was really on the commercial space. So I just wanted to clarify I understood this correctly because I think when I looked at the plan and read the report, I thought the only thing that was left was Rustic Bakery. But having heard the presentation, it sounds like there were three commercial units left. There'll be Rustic Bakery, the salon and another business. Is that, is that my understanding? There's three going to be?
Yes, the, the existing building, we would remove the two commercial spaces at the end, the, the space that is the barber shop and the space next to it. We would, we would stop it at the existing Rustic Bakery and then move the barber into the space in between the salon and Rustic Bakery. And then reconfigure Rustic Bakery because they wanted to have a mercantile shop and a, and a visible kitchen and just open to the patio space outside. But yes, to answer your question, there will be three spaces, three commercial spaces to remain in the four hundred square feet.
Got it. Okay. So I mean, what is your plan then with the existing tenants? I mean, are they, are you, are you just terminating all their leases? I mean, what is, what's the situation with the Rustic Bakery lease? I mean, do they have a long-term lease, short-term? I mean, what, what's, what's happening around that?
Yeah, I think, so we're the applicant and not the property owner and we, you know, our intent is to the, the three tenants, Richard identified long-term and, you know, I think at the, for the time being, I may not have the privilege to speak to some of the other influences and commitments.
Okay, now understood. So what is your, I mean, is that open space that's next to Rustic Bakery? Is, is that, I mean, your, I mean, is your intention then to like lease that to Rustic Bakery as well? So that would be a dedicated space for them? Or is that also open to the residential unit? So what, what's your thinking around that?
Richard can take that one. You'd like Richard?
Well, yeah, if you go to the next slide. The next one, one more. Our intent is to create outdoor dining similar to what Rustic has at the country mart. And it wouldn't necessarily be a park, but it's big enough to have some, maybe some lawn areas, some area beyond just having outdoor tables.
Okay. So it sounds like it's dedicated to Rustic Bakery.
Pretty much. I would say pretty much.
Okay. And then there's a second open space. So that's for the, the residential units. Is that the intention there? Cause it's right at the back.
Yes. Yes. As for the residential use.
Okay. Okay, understood. Yeah, those, those are my, and then I guess just a general question, just what are you doing about the bicycles, bicycle infrastructure?
We, we will have it. We haven't, no, that's very important. So we will be, that will be our next steps. Make sure how it's included and it works well. no, that's very important. Um, so we will be, that will be our next steps, make sure how it's included and it works well. Um, you know, I started off my biking career in the Marin Hills, so I'm very sensitive to make sure we have bikes.
Mm-hmm, okay. Should we um, now take it to the general public?
Yeah, thank you. Um, maybe we can see, uh, Kristen, can you see who's out there and who would like to, to speak? I see seven hands raised. I don't know sure whether those are some of the people we're already talking to. Kristen?
Sorry, I forgot I was muted. I'm, I'm removing the hands of the people who um, have already spoke. That'll help.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a Philip who's had his hand up the longest.
Let, let's let Philip speak.
Philip, you need to make sure you're unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, good. And I, uh, my wife Chantin is here also. Um, we, uh, thank you for the presentation, uh, both uh, by the city staff and also by the app, well, yeah, because it's really exciting and we're generally supportive. Um, we live on Francis, close to Magnolia. Um, you know, Rustic is around the corner and we eat that constantly. So um, you had asked about residents from this neighborhood and that's certainly us. Um, we're, I think we have the same questions as were raised earlier about the home office concept. And in particular, how you prevent those frontages from simply becoming somebody's living room
Or rental spaces.
Or rental spaces. So that's something to consider. We're also quite concerned about parking. Um, where we are on Francis, also Murray, also Estelle, parking is already quite limited. And I think we're concerned that with the concessions being requested with respect to parking, there, there will be folks who have cars who are trying to find parking either because they're residents there or because they're visiting home offices or because they're visiting the retail. And they'll be circulating through these streets where we live, where there are young families who've moved in. And uh, so their kids playing in the streets. And because of the reduction in parking, we're concerned that there will be uh, a challenge on, on these residential streets that we live on and that our neighbors live on. So maybe, maybe there's a possibility of reserving the parking on these streets for residents of these streets. Um, I'm not sure what you, what ideas that may be to address those concerns.
There, there are residence stickers. Um, we live near Redwood High School and we've done the, done a similar thing. So that would be a possibility.
Yeah. I mean, that-
I'm sorry, you're not coming in. Somebody needs to be closer to the speaker.
Who of those spaces on Estelle are already used by residents of an apartment that's right behind this unit? Or this development? Um, consistently. And then the parking that is shown in front of where the rustic spaces would be really isn't much of an addition. There's already all of those slanted parking spots. There's already four spots in front of the rustic building on the kind of the, that interior curb. Though that really isn't additional parking. And we are concerned that if those home offices have visitors and any of those um, townhouses, which, you know, I mean, we are in favor of this development. Don't get us wrong. Uh, but we, we do feel like parking is going to be an issue. It's already an issue here on Francis towards Magnolia. It's already tight, especially during the week. So we, we are concerned about parking. And uh, the second thing I would add is that the sidewalk along Magnolia in front of this development, we really would like it to be double that width. The sidewalk across the street on Magnolia is too narrow for two people to walk down the sidewalk. It'd be lovely if two people could actually walk down the sidewalk with their dog. So a little wider would be great. But that's it.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us the opportunity.
Thank you. Is there another hand, another person would like to speak?
Michael Hooper. You need to unmute your computer or your-
Can you hear me?
Justin? Yes, yeah, thanks, Michael.
Um, evening all. Um, this has come a long way since I first saw this. Um, I was one of the, the people that Seavash um, uh, consulted, I suppose, as a member of the community that had been involved in this type of development over the years. And I was very happy to, you know, provide some input because I do think this is a, a site that you know, needs to happen. It needs some vision. Um, I think it's, I, you know, it's certainly one of the most constrained sites, you know, that we've got and definitely one of the most prominent, probably only Nazari is more prominent. And it's deserving of something special. I've been to Ace Hardware there, I don't know how many times when it was there and the restaurant there too. And in fact, I've had a run at this at least twice in the last fifteen years. I know the current owner values the property very highly. Uh, in other words, he's looking for a, a prime or a prize price, shall we say. Um, and I think, while I, you know, I admire Seer and his teammates for having a run at this because it's very, very, very hard um, to fit enough on this to make it viable. I'm sure the owner values the buildings that are proposed for removal. Well, that's a loss to this development team. So I do think that they do need um, as much as they can ask for, shall we say. And I, I actually think this is a site that you, you almost start with the vision. You don't start with the rules. You know, you have to come up with a vision and it's an, an odd case where you have to make the rules fit the vision. Somebody mentioned a PD earlier. That's what PDs are for. So that it provides uh, the commission, the council and staff the flexibility to move forward with a good project. And this is, from what I saw at the beginning, this has advanced a long way. I mean, you've got people that know what they're doing. You've got talented people and I'm sure Seer and his team have investigated the market. And I can see with all these constraints that this home office thing is a bit of a compromise. I actually think you might change the label on that because I can almost see, see that space being, or these units being owned by, it's like, it's like working above the store. You know, in, in England in the old days, you used to have lots of that where people operated a store and there's a little internal stair and it got the flat, you know, above it. This is going back in time to that. I do think the, you know, I, I love the, the elevation so far. Any, anyway, I love the glass. I do think there's a little bit of work to be done. I, I like the idea of an, an entry to the unit as well as the, the store or the home office or whatever you're gonna call it. Um, but you know, overall, I think, you know, again, from what I saw at the beginning, this has gone a million miles. And they've reached out, at least to me, I don't know how many other people they reached out to, and now they're reaching out to you. Well, of course, staff obviously have done their investigation to figure out the rules. But, you know, here, again, I, I really do think that you have to start with the vision. Perhaps, there are several good comments being brought up by, you know, staff and members of the, of the public, of course. And I'm sure Dalen and Richard can, you know, tweak some things here. Uh, you might think about rooftop decks. Uh, we're doing them now up in Novato on our eighty-unit project up there. They're not all rooftop decks, but a lot of them are. You're beginning, I'm sure Dalen has done them. The, the, this location has got great views across the street. Um, and actually even to the hillside. So I think maybe there's a little bit more work to be done on that. But, you know, overall, I think that um, this is a good project. And we need it. It's been in this state for way too long. It's like a lot of the housing stock in uh, in Larkspur, especially in places like Madrone Canyon where I live. It needs to be brought into the twentieth century because what we presently have is deteriorating at an increasing rate. And we need the housing here. So I, I would encourage staff, the commission and the council to be extremely flexible on this project. I, I can understand why a lot of people would say, well, the commercial belongs on the corner. You know, and usually it does. But you've got a site that is so constrained that to do anything with it, there has to be some balance, a compromise. So those are my comments. I think, you know, flexibility is the name of the game. And thank you for the excellent presentation, presentations from staff Sean and uh, the two architects. End of comments.
Thank you, Michael. Um, do you have the next person who would like to speak?
Corinne Estrada. You need to unmute yourself?
Okay, I should be unmuted. I hope.
You are.
Okay. Um, first of all, thank you for letting us have comments. I am commenting because my husband owns the barber shop. So one of the very last questions from the council there was why these tenants? Well, because we've all built our business up over the last few decades and we want to stay. That is one of the biggest reasons. Um, for instance, the barber shop was built as a barber shop in nineteen forty-seven. That's all it's ever been. And my husband's owned it since two thousand, so we've had it for twenty-one years and we do not want to go away. We've built a great business there. We love the community. And um, same as Rustic Bakery, Gravity's doing really good business also, and that's why the three of us are planning on staying. We really want to be there. Um, I did want to comment on, somebody was talking about the brick. If you go to Second and B Streets in San Rafael right now, they just completed a brand-new building. And it is very similar in style to what they are offering here. So you can, everyone can drive by and take a look at it and see what the brick looks like. Uh, the loft at Albert Park, that is somewhere that is in the area that does have the home office in part of it. So that is a building that is local. If anybody wants to check into and see how the home office works, it's been working well for them for a while. Another comment I did want to say is I heard people say, you know, this is right on the street. Well, that brand-new building on Second and B is on the street. The loft at Albert Park are on the street. Lone Tom, Lone Palm Court Apartments at eight forty C Street is right on the street. Eight fifty-five C Street, right on the street. All these buildings are filled all the time and are doing really well. It's just like living in the city. If you like to live in town, it is not going to bother you to live that close to the street. One of the things I think they could do, um, because they are asking for larger apartments is maybe somewhere in the back is include a small playground for the children. I think that is incredibly important. Um, it was something where we required, I do happen to work for as a property manager and work for a developer in two of our other complexes. It was a requirement that we had to have a small play area for children. So that's something they could incorporate. The other thing I just wanted to comment was on the below-market rate. You guys are offering eighty percent and one of the things that everyone wants to push is it's so school teachers and firefighters can live in the area. At eighty percent, they would never qualify because they don't make enough money. You might want to think if you have five units that are BMR, maybe do two of them at sixty percent. So you could get maybe some school teachers or policemen or firemen to live there. But once you get to eighty and a hundred and twenty percent, um, it's, they just can't afford it. Other than that, I do think the area needs to be developed. We've been there, like I said, for a very long time. Um, I will have to admit though, nobody's pushed very hard on getting any tenants in there. So that is one of the big reasons why it's sat for a long time. But thank you for taking my comments.
Uh, thank you for your comments. Do we have uh, anybody else?
Yes, um, we have a phone number, four one five nine two four one four oh two. You're allowed to talk. You need to unmute. Oh, I think they just, there we go.
Uh, James Holmes, Larkspur. Uh, this has the germ of a good idea, but uh, the uh, initial proposal seems to be a, a bit of a stretch. The good news, I think, is that the architecture is great. Um, uh, and the uh, traditional style, I think, is harmonious with the, some of the other successful uh, developments of similar style in, in Larkspur as such as the King Street Muse and, and Rose Lane. Uh, I don't have enough of a sense about the brick to, to comment on that, but certainly the shingle and the, the darker style is, is desirable and, and, and mitigates the uh, the size. But I do think the size and scale is, is far too great a- as has been uh, mentioned. Um, three stories seems excessive. Um, it um, would loom over what's really a rather narrow street. It's pretty close to being unlike anything else uh, in the area. And I think every effort should be made to uh, uh, hold the project to two stories and, or to at a minimum minimize the uh, uh, the three-story uh, components. Um, I think that uh, there is a, as I think was adverted to, there's a, a sort of an inconsistency between large family units and, and the lack of, of open space on the parcel. And there just isn't really room for a lot of open space. Uh, so it's, it's not a criticism that it was omitted. There just isn't a lot of room for it. Uh, and to me, that suggests that the units should be smaller and fewer. And smaller and fewer units would, would address the uh, the uh, crowding and, and the size and scale uh, issues. Um, the, the home office uh, storefront seems to be uh, reasonable and, and interesting in, in theory. Uh, my concern would be, on the other hand, it, it might look like, you know, vacant storefronts turned into uh, offices. Uh, so uh, I think that one would want to, to avoid uh, that look. Uh, I think the proof is really going to be in the parking and uh, and the hillside safety issue, which I think is a, is a major uh, problem. And uh, I'm, I'm grateful for what the last speaker said, just as a matter of sort of history. Or it's uh, not uh, this is not, you know, a moribund shopping mall. Um, it has uh, lively, thriving shops and uh, I think inquiry might show that the vacancies reflect as much uh, property management as uh, market conditions. So um, while certainly additional development might be a- appropriate, uh, I, I wouldn't look, look at this as like a depressed area in great need of, of, of of, of vital redevelopment. But uh, I, I think that uh, it's, it, this is a start, but uh, it, it needs some uh, it needs some weight reduction. Uh, thanks very much.
Thank you, James. Um, Kristen, anybody?
Yes, we do. Okay, Joan Lubomirsky, you can speak, but you need to unmute.
Yes, hi, Joan Lubomirsky here.
Yep.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this proposal. I haven't studied the entire staff report, but it appears to be a very good guide for you in terms of the process you'll need to go through for this review. I'm pleased that North Magnolia is being redeveloped. This will really enliven the neighborhood and will support those other local businesses that will be there, the balloon store and others along North Magnolia. Now, some of my comments are going to be related to things like unit size that are not part of your process today, but I'd like to just, I guess, start the conversation and share my thoughts on those items. The first thing I do want to talk about that was public notice because I live two blocks away. Hadn't, I know it's more than five hundred feet, but I saw it just because I was walking by. And I, and that's not a good way to start a project because residents are, become understandably angry when they only learn about something when it's further along down the line. So I hope that that can be remedied. Echoing some of the things like that that have been said about exceptions. I totally agree that the city should be flexible and if it means a trade off for something the city wants. I appreciate the issues of a project penciling out. But I think that when there are exceptions given, it should be because the city is getting something. Admittedly, a development there is getting something, but I think we need more than just that. In terms of design and massing, as was said, this is one of the gateways to Larkspur. But it appears to me to be kind of like dumping the Wind Cup Tambridge development from Corder Medera on Tambo Vista, just kind of relocating that to Larkspur. As opposed to, it doesn't look like a neighborhood. I think one of the commissioners mentioned a village. And I mean, more articulation would help to eliminate some of that bulky look, but I think, you know, exterior differentiation or something on that order, or maybe putting the housing on the bakery. I don't know, but I would like to see maybe some other approach that would make it look like a neighborhood, not like something that's just been dropped whole there on Magnolia and Estelle. The current proposed changes in elevation do add some interest. I'd like to see maybe more elevation at the back of the, of the, I'd be willing to support that at the back of the project. I am concerned about the front elevation because, as I think my neighbors down the street mentioned, you know, many people walk their dogs and walk themselves along that sidewalk. And I don't want to seem like a big wall that they're facing. On housing or children, I want to mention the units. I don't believe we need any more market rate housing in Larkspur. I don't think we need more two thousand square feet four bedroom units. I'd like to see more of the low moderate units. And I don't want to see in lieu fees. I think we want units built, as Neil mentioned. But I'd like to see perhaps more of more two bedroom units. That first time home buyers might be able to afford, as well as older people who want to downsize and stay in town. Some trade offs, I think, could make that work. I trust that the commission will be diligent and thorough in your review. I understand what you're going through and I appreciate what you're devoting your time and your energy to the commission and and I want to thank you for your service.
Thank you, Joan. It's good to hear your voice. Are there any other people out there that want to speak?
Joan Lubomirsky, you need to unmute. I'm sorry, wrong person. I thought we had a. Okay. The hand is still raised all over it. I'm assuming she's done. Oh. Sorry. And that's all the hands I had raised. Joan was our last speaker, so I put her hand down.
Okay. Seeing no other people that wish to speak, I guess we'll bring it back to the commission for additional discussion. And I assume that the that the people promoting the project are still out there. We have any questions? Because I see a lot of attendees still.
We still have all four of them in attendance.
Okay. I'm just gonna kind of open it up and let whoever, if anybody wants to move ahead and give their thoughts on this. I'd ask that they do that rather than me calling on somebody this time. So is there any of you commissioners out there that want to add something to what we've kind of already talked over with with the owners and the architects?
Yeah, Brock, the, in the staff report, and by the way, thanks so much to just after this, for this report. It was very, very well organized, extremely helpful. But in the staff report, they actually list the questions that they want us to answer. So I was going to proceed in that fashion. And again, as Neil has pointed out to us, you know, this is, this is a study session. We're not, we're not really deliberating an approval of any kind of, of any findings. But Brock, if I could proceed that manner, I'm happy to go ahead and do that and try to be as succinct as possible.
Yes, please do.
Okay, so so I'll refer to the pages. So on page twelve of the staff report, there's a first list of issues and questions. One, does the project contribute to the commercial vitality of North Magnolia commercial corridor? And I think I've got, I've got sort of a qualified yes to that answer because it does enhance the attractiveness of the Rustic Bakery, which by the way, has the best croissants outside of France, and I do speak from experience. So yeah, so I think it turns a rustic bakery probably into a bit even more of a magnet than it currently is. So I would say yes. Is the conceptual design representative of high quality design from the North Magnolia corridor? I think the design is high quality. I may have, you know, ultimately some objections to some of the specifics about the design, but I don't doubt the quality of the work that has been, that has been shown to us this evening. Third is a commercial component of the project with home offices below the residential space of desirable approach. I'm not quite sure about that. So I would, I would sort of put that as somewhat of a qualified, qualified notice. To my mind, there's something that sort of has to be modified to sort of make it seem like sort of more of a natural development than something, oh my gosh, we have to do this because it's a requirement. And that might open the door to, well, you know, consideration of whether, you know, there should be a specific plan for this area as opposed to a set of waivers. The fourth is how does the location layout of residential units, the vehicle access relates to traffic noise, air quality? We don't really know. I did, I did voice some concern about having enough open space, and I think Joan Lubomirsky did as well. Nathan Estrada, one of the two speakers. As opposed to the development of the building at the right location of the property. You know, I, maybe, maybe not. I think from the, from the looks of it, I think it could possibly work. The one image that did come to my mind that, you know, that maybe a little bit anxious is the comparison to Wind Cup in Corder Medera. There is one commercial establishment there. It's a, it's sort of a higher end convenience store, convenience grocery store. And that looks like, it's not much of a, it doesn't really have that much commercial appeal. It might be a very fine commerce and a very good business, but in terms of streetscape, it doesn't really add, you know, too much commercial, commercial appeal. The other question is, are the concepts and renderings appropriate for this location? I would say partially. You know, the devil's in the details and we probably would get to that at a later date. Is the access circulation plan appropriate for the section of Magnolia? I would say probably not. There was not much discussion about fire truck access. But it would appear that it is in fact inadequate and we simply can't really compromise on that point. Should the general plan be updated? I would say yes, probably. And is the proposed commercial space, if the proposed commercial space is not viable, would we support some kind of amendment? And again, I prefer something like that to some kind of fictitious designation of home offices as commercial establishments. So that's kind of where I come down. And again, I just want to, as instructed by staff, you'll provide just some commentary rather than, oh, you know, this is a thumbs up or a thumbs down or any kind of that because we're, it's way too early for that. I definitely applaud the, you know, the architects for what they've done, you know, thus far as sort of an opening suggestion. Sure, there's going to be the work. I'm sure they're very, very aware of that. And I'm sure they're taking the comments that they've heard tonight from us and from the public to heart. But I definitely applaud their efforts and I definitely, you know, concur that this area does, you know, will benefit from from substantial redevelopment and that there are benefits to the city. Okay, I'm gonna stop right there.
Brock, I can go next if you like.
Please.
Because I actually agree with a lot of what Daniel said and I like the way he presented it in line with the questions asked by the the staff. So I'm not going to just go through the questions again, but I'll just sort of add my thoughts on it, which is, again, I just want to, I know I said this earlier, but I wanted to thank the applicant for taking on this project. I think it is a challenging project and it's great that they've come at this. And I think that the residential need is a strong one and we need, we know, we need that. So that's that they've provided some very useful sort of requirements that we need in Larkspur. I will say that I am struggling with the idea that they've wiped out so much of the commercial units in this area that's designated C two, because it's according to the general plan, its intent was to be commercial. So to come in and take so much out, I'm having a little bit of a hard time with that. I was pleased to see from the presentation that, because I thought originally it was just one unit left standing, one commercial unit left, but I'm pleased that there were three. And I wanted to see, and maybe this is a question or it's something for them, just to consider if they can keep any other commercial space. I actually wondered whether it was possible to provide something like a some kind of like corner shop, like they do at Andy's Market at Tambridge. Something for the local residents to be able to walk to, you know, residents at Hillview, residents here on this site. Or even some kind of small restaurant or deli that can be added to this. So again, something to consider. And it would be great that if they can make sure that any of the three units that are left stay there and they don't then disappear like the the other existing tenants, commercial tenants in this space. I would like to see the applicant make sure that they're supported for the long term. I had less issues on the density because this is a downtown location. So I think by definition, it's going to be somewhat dense. And I think the design could hopefully solve for that. And I like the idea that it stepped back and I like the terraces. And I think one of the speakers had suggested something on the roof, some kind of roof terraces. I like that idea too. I'm not so sure about the storefront concept. I think when it was initially presented, I thought the idea was they were trying to squeeze into this commercial use. And I think it came clear that they're not doing that. They've acknowledged that this is a home office and they're not trying to present it as a commercial use. In which case, do you really even need to do that? If the only reason they introduced that was to try and make it commercial, then I think maybe they need to rethink that. Now, if it's something that they think would be a novel concept and would work for people wanting to move here, then maybe we consider it. But it needs to be there for the right reasons. What else? The open space, I would obviously would love more open space, but I'm not sure that it's possible to put something in there. I love the idea of the playground. But again, I don't, I don't know if that's, it may, it may be very constrained. But I think we need to look at the parking, where the parking is located. And that probably would happen at a later date. And the flow through and obviously the safety issues with the hillside that I think will obviously will come at a later discussion. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Natasha. Laura, do you want to? Go ahead and.
Sure. I've kind of said, I guess, a little bit about what I'm thinking. I would really, I guess, I feel like the home offices, so I'm of two minds. One is, is that they're really, you know, couldn't you just make another bedroom and give people the flexibility of making it into a home office or not? And have like a regular entry into the house? If it really isn't supposed to be access to the exterior, you know, to the street. I would love, like, really like to see more commercial mixed in with all of this stuff. I appreciated the comment that was made by someone. You know, you see this elsewhere in the world all the time. You see it in New York City, you know, you see it here in dense urban areas where there's commercial down below and people live above. And I guess I just, I kind of would like to see that. And I guess that's why I keep asking about the big commercial space that has nothing on top. So you've got all this dense housing and then a one story big commercial space next door. And it just seems like you're kind of missing the boat on that. And I understand you don't want to have to rebuild that whole building, but I think if you're gonna, you know, think about this as sort of a, you know, a whole planned development, I think it's, I think it's misguided not to think about the whole thing. And how that really fits with everything else. And I think if you did that, you could figure out the parking. You know, because then you could reduce some of the density of some of the other spaces. And you could have parking, you know, you could have a parking garage maybe attached to it and where the open space is and you move the open space to a slightly different location or something. I don't know. I think you could be a little more creative. I will say that I am thrilled that we're even talking about this because this is a parcel that's been underutilized for a very long time and then vacant for a very long time. And it is right on Magnolia and it is a gateway to the city. So I am very happy that we're having the conversation. And I guess I'll stop there.
Thank you, Laura. Jeffrey?
Well, I think, I want to just echo what Laura said about the, I'm thrilled that somebody's looking at this property and developing it because I think currently it's an eyesore and it's underutilized and it's unsafe as it currently exists. Because of some of the, you know, I guess, geo issues there. I think, I think it's really interesting, the idea of the home office thing. And I think that if anything that COVID has taught us is that there's going to be a lot more people wanting this kind of live workspace. So I think this is forward thinking. I do agree that there could be something done to telegraph, what Brock said, more of an entrance to the place. The door does sort of imply that it's going to be something that the public would be going into. And so that's just a design thing. I'm not an architect, obviously Brock is, and you guys are. So, but I think that would go a long way of maybe not telegraphing so much that it's inviting a commercial use when it really is a home office. Parking is an issue. I think you're going to have to address the fire issue about having a truck go in. Maybe you'll be able to do something with that second open space area there that a fire truck could turn around in. I don't think you're going to be able to find open space for playgrounds or kids there. This is more like an urban sort of type environment. And I think it's gonna attract maybe not so many families as young professionals, um, without kids. But you know, the, the market will bear that out and see what happens. But I'm excited about it. I think it's gonna be a great project and based upon what they've done at Rose Lane and other places, I think that it's gonna be a real addition to Larkspur.
I'm trying to unmute myself. Um, thanks, thanks everybody. I, uh, I have a big list that I've sort of made as I went along and, um, I too am, I'm very thankful that somebody is finally taking this project on. I think it's, uh, an important piece of property, uh, to the town of Larkspur and, and I think something there would be, uh, outstanding. And I think they're kind of, uh, if this is a really good start, I think that, uh, I have some questions. I, I tend to agree that I'm not sure that, that trying to renovate the rustic bakery building isn't, isn't sort of the tail wagging the dog when you've got, um, this much other work being done in the rest of the property. Because if you start, uh, rethink that, that building, it, it then gives you the opportunity to put some smaller apartments on top, senior housing, maybe it's, um, who, who knows, but, um, I, I will leave that up to them to, to think about and maybe it really doesn't make financial sense. But there's so much, uh, that's being put into the rest of the property. It's hard to believe that's, that's, uh, that's the, the straw that breaks the camel's back. So, um, I, I often wonder whether underground parking is a possibility. Nobody approached that. I know it's really expensive. It's, it's something that I feel like the parking for the size of these units and, and for the commercial is, um, is, is not, is not enough. Um, and I think, you know, uh, counting the street parking, there's really only two guest parking spaces for all those units. Not counting the, the street parking. So I'd like to see, uh, some thought that goes into that. And, um, so, uh, I think there's, I think they've made, made a really good start. I'm not, I, I like the idea of some commercial on the street. I don't think it has to be all commercial. But I also feel like if you have a four-bedroom, uh, townhouse, that you need to have an obvious access for people coming to visit. And I'm not sure that accomplishes this, that, um, this feels like you're going into an office or a, or a, a, a small shop. So anyway, those are, um, those are my thoughts and I appreciate the applicants coming in and showing us what they're up to. Neil, what, where, where, uh, where do we go from here? Is this, uh, is that sort of giving them some, some direction?
Kristen?
There we go.
Well, I think if you feel you've all, it, it was helpful that, um, you addressed the, the items that were laid out in the staff report, uh, to some degree. And, you know, I think we could, we could check with the applicant if they have any further questions, uh, for you. Obviously there's probably more they'd love to have answered. But we, we do have to keep this kind of within, at the conceptual level. Uh, I think we're getting a lot of, we've gotten a lot of good, um, uh, input and feedback from the commission. And Sean, do you have any items or questions you think the, we ought to try to get additional from the commission at this point?
I wonder if it'd be fair to the applicant to maybe run down a consensus of items, uh, for their benefit. And I don't know, if that's the chair that does that or, or we can do that. But I think what I heard was, sort of a mixed bag on whether the home office, uh, is needed. Definitely wanna see more of a residential entrance at the ground floor. Uh, I do think there was a consensus that maybe they could explore residential over the commercial building. It did sound like there was consensus that the design is, uh, high level, uh, that they, uh, the commission really anticipates this site being redeveloped somewhat, uh, in a Rose Lane type fashion, but you know, like a marquee design that sort of really brings it. I'm not sure if there was consensus about multiple commercial spaces. Um, I did hear commentary about sort of the corner at Estelle and Magnolia. Parking is always an issue. Sounds like maybe the open space for the residential unit could feature a playground or something more family friendly. Um, I did hear a lot of sort of, could there be more variation in, in heights enassing? Uh, possibly some sort of rooftop, uh, type, uh, development.
I think that's, that's pretty accurate. Um,
Brock, I had just one more little comment. And, cause I, I, I heard this from, uh, number of members of the commission also from the, from the public. And that, uh, and that was comparisons to, uh, to places like Santa Rafael and even to New York City. And those are, those are cities. So this development just, just strikes me as very, very urban in terms of its, uh, its philosophy and overall, overall design. And I, I'm, I'm not here to say whether that's good or bad, objectionable or not. Uh, but rather just so we all realize that that kind of is what this is. It is an urban style development and it kind of the first of its sort in, in Larkspur. And we should just be cognizant of that.
Yeah, I, I, I do think that one, um, one thing I've, that might help for us in working with the applicants on the path forward is, yeah, as we've said, you know, the area is identified primarily as commercial. And this, the project largely, um, is largely a residential project with a nod to sort of a commercial presence through the home offices, which I think the commission has indicated. If anything, the, the, the home offices are not a bad concept and there may be market for it, but actually trying to create the impression or vision of these being commercial is maybe not as, not as desirable as, as actually just kind of implementing, implementing these as home offices with residential fronts. And I think the question is, does the commission feel that the, that we should be working towards a solution that is flexible in that degree for this area as a, um, as a commercial, you know, as a commercial mixed use, as a commercial area? And should we be looking more flexibly at a kind of a horizontal mixed use approach? And how we might accomplish that? And is there a desire to really try to retain some? I, I kind of got a mixed response on the desire to retain some true, uh, commercial presence in the larger part of the, the property, not just, there's, there's discussion about adding commercial, adding residential over the commercial that's remaining. But there wasn't quite as much clarity about whether there's need to try to retain or introduce some level of commercial, particularly maybe towards the corner or along the Magnolia frontage that is, um, you know, not necessarily represented by home office. Or should we be looking towards how we amend the code or address the rules to, um, you know, maybe be more flexible towards this approach, um, of having a, a sort of a built, very functional home office that could kind of serve as a public facing office, but also serve as a home office. And granted, we're not gonna have controls over how that's used. But is that something that, uh, you know, I've kind of heard on one hand, it's visionary. On another hand, it really doesn't make sense as having a walk-in doors, your front door to your home or a public doors, your front door to your home.
Yeah, there was something else. In fact, along those lines, it wasn't really discussed, which is, uh, is the issue of precedent setting. If, if what ultimately gets done to say, well, we are gonna consider these home offices to actually be commercial, does that actually open up a can of worms in other areas of the, uh, of the city? We say, just a second, you know, they're doing it here. Uh, they're designating that home office as commercial. Why can't we do it? Why can't, why can't we do it? Uh, which is why I'm wondering if, uh, um, some kind of an area plan for this, uh, you know, for this development might be a better way to go and make sure that we're not opening that can of worms.
I, I agree with Daniel on that. I almost, I almost think that's sort of separate. If they want, they're offering a home office. I don't think they're trying to now designate this as being commercial to fit this under the C2 requirement. So if anything, that's kind of a separate issue. They choose to have that as part of the design. That's one thing. If they choose not to do it, fine, but they shouldn't have to just be putting this in here just to try and fit it under a code, but it's not required. So I agree with Daniel. Like we either look at it as a separate eye concept, like, you know, what, what did you call it? A project area designer? Sorry, I'm getting the terminology wrong here.
I get it wrong all the time. Yeah. I think it's specific area plan or something like that.
Specific area plan. Thank you. As opposed to trying to kind of fit it within the rules and then cause a problem later on down, down the line for other projects. I think that could be quite dangerous.
I, I think I would agree with that. I think what, what we really should be doing is trying to figure out what is the right development of this particular difficult parcel. And, you know, if it's commercial, yes. If it's a home office, yes. If it's neither of those, okay. I, I feel like we should try to come up with whatever is best for this particular site. And, and it's probably gonna be different than what is currently in the plan.
And, and in fact, it would not be hard to have commercial, uh, instead of the home office. If you look at the plan, that the corner, which is the sort of the approach to, to Larkspur from the north, that's a, those are big home office spaces that could be commercial.
Yeah, it, it occurred to me that the two unit Fs, well, they're four unit Fs, that maybe those are the commercial spaces and the other ones are just.
Yeah, I, I think there's, there's ways that they can make this work. But I, I think we've given them enough direction. I think they, they're, they know we're leery of this home office business.
And let me ask one last question, just to, just to kind of make sure I've got a feel of the, from the aesthetics because yeah, what, it, it may be challenging ultimately. I think the applicants have the best of intentions. And I heard some pretty positive, I, I just wanna make sure I've got some pretty positive responses on sort of the materials and the architectural approaches, sort of the detailing and concept. Is that, is that a fair takeaway? It, it's kind of introducing, um, you know, we, I think we said the area does not have a very defined era or feel to it. Um, so this is kind of introducing something. We've seen it in other parts of the city and it could be softened or modernized a little bit, but I just wanted to kind of make sure I'm getting some, and the applicants are getting some feedback on kind of the exterior approaches. I heard some real positives and then I heard, I guess, some question marks.
I like the. Fine on brick?
Yeah, I like the brick. I think it looks nice and it's, uh, McNear Rustic and it's near rustic bakery. So there's sort of a nice, uh, you know.
I, I guess we could argue about that over, at a later day.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Believe me, you don't all have to agree.
I, I, I mean, I feel like that's, you're starting to get a pretty detail. And I thought this was really supposed to be conceptual.
It is, it is conceptual, but, um, you know, I just think they, they're, they're looking for an idea of what they're.
But, but.
I think it's more important right now that there be more variation in the, the heights and the shapes. And I'd like to see it be, look a little more like, um, a, a little less monolithic. And I'm less concerned about whether it's brick or some other cladding.
I, I agree with that. I, I do like the idea of rooftop decks too. I think that would lend some real interest to this, uh, by varying the heights and making maybe some rooftop deck space, which would.
They have the ability to vary the heights. If you, if you look at how much space you need to be. Even, even spaciously nine feet in an apartment is a, is a pretty tall ceiling. And, uh, you don't get up to 42 feet. Uh, if you, if you can bring a few of them down, there's, there's lots of ways to mitigate the, the mass. But I, I will leave that up to them.
And I guess the other comment I would make is to make it more broken up, changing the materials by, in the townhouses next to each other would make it look less of a monolith. It would make it look more like separate buildings that happen to be next to each other.
I, I feel like the comment we've heard several times that it's very close to the, to the road. It's big and looming. So I would defer to the architects to try and make it sort of less monolithic. I like, I like that description. I think that's, that works well. You know, it's step back. Uh, if you can have sort of step backs and, and, and I think that, I think it's actually, I actually quite like it. Maybe you can go more into that, in, in that direction.
But I think that's part of the reason why people, you know, compared it to Wind Cup. I think that's part of the objection is that it's tall and it's sort of just a big kind of blocky. And I think that's what part of the objection is. So that would be, that would be my guideline, guidance.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
Neil, uh, how do we notice more people? Because I think that was a fair, uh, assessment by Joan. It, it should be in the paper or something. Um,
Well, we, we, uh, no, we can, we can certainly make a point of trying to do more of a, a, a larger public outreach uh, process, um, certainly as this gets to a more formalized application.
Yeah. Okay. Does anybody have anything more to say? Would somebody, uh, like to, uh, move to approve the minutes of May 25th?
I moved to approve the minutes of May 25th.
I second.
All right. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? And, uh, let's see, are there any, um, planning commission, uh, reports?
I just, I, I just want to thank the city for, um, adopting the more modern technology and dog waste bags. They're now biodegradable, uh, which is a long time coming. It's, I'm very happy about that.
Anything else? Would somebody like to move to adjourn?
I will move to adjourn.
Do we here have a second? Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. We'll see everybody the next time.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks Sean.
Thank you.